Good evening, this is Superintendent Luke Francois here at Waterford Union High School. And we have a candidate forum. We have three candidates for two positions. And tonight's an opportunity for us to learn more about our candidates. Each one was an extended invitation. Unfortunately, a member, or I'm sorry, Mr. Beck has declined the opportunity to join the candidate forum tonight. But we do want to honor the opportunity for you to learn about the other remaining candidates through this forum. So we're going to continue by moving forward with asking some questions. We will rotate through roughly about nine questions, but we will also be taking questions throughout the night. So if you have a question, the forum chat will be moderated and we'll be watching your questions come in. And we have received a question already that we will intersperse in between some can questions. For the audience, the members were provided today, the candidates were provided the questions in advance. So they could have some understanding about the types of questions we would ask and prepare some responses. But already with one question coming in late and others anticipated, there will be some candid answers as well as we go through this evening. The format will last roughly about forty-five minutes. We've given each person roughly ninety seconds to respond to each one of the questions. And we'll get started by introducing you to member Mr. Patel, who is our incumbent. And Mr. Sobrowski, who is running for candidacy. So with that, Mr. Patel, you have our first question. And then I'll ask the same question of Mr. Sobrowski, ninety seconds, please. What motivated you to run for the school board? And what specific experiences or qualifications do you bring to this position?
Okay, what motivated me to run for school board? To be honest, is in October of 2017, Keith Brandstetter showed up my house unexpectedly. And of course, my first thought, what did my kid do now? Instead, he got out of the car and he said, let's sit down and talk. So we sat down in the garage. And he said, I need to talk to you because you have a civic responsibility. And I'm like, okay. And he had a bullet point argument about why it was my responsibility to run for school board. He said a number of things, but basically what he thought was important was I had three kids come through school of all differing abilities, all three of them. From very high academic to mid to one student who needed IEP services. And so I had really had contact with all the departments that exist within this high school. And he thought that was a valuable experience to have had. In terms of qualifications, I guess I could share the following. When I was in college from undergrad from 1974 to 1978, I was an education major. I graduated as a licensed teacher in the state of Michigan. And how that maybe is applicable for me today is I've recently had the experience of people I learned about as an undergrad with educational philosophies that you should stay away from. To only discover now they're embedded in our own Department of Public Instruction. Very inappropriate philosophies in my opinion. I also went to law school. And I guess what I would say since 1978 from not to now, I have worked essentially every day with middle schoolers and high schoolers. First as a juvenile probation officer for two years. And then after law school, I worked as a criminal defense attorney at Milwaukee County Children's Court as a public defender. Yes, I represented every kid charged with every crime on the books. It kept me in the school system though, in all the schools in Milwaukee County. And then my last fourteen years, I was asked to manage the mental health commitment unit at the public defender's office, representing people facing involuntary commitment to locked psychiatric facilities. A lot of kids, it was interesting from the year 2000 till you get to 2015, the number of suicide kids on suicide watch, and it seemed to increase with social media. Very scary stuff. Also gave me the experience back then to do two things. I got to meet a lot of kids who identified as trans to try and understand what their backgrounds and histories were. I also would add that I taught, for twenty-two years, I taught for the state bar continuing legal education courses in children's court, juvenile court, and mental commitment. So I had teaching experience built in there as well. Thank you.
Mr. Patel, and now Mr. Sobrowski, same question.
Well, let's start with motivation. For my whole adult life, I've been involved in schools. Retired two years ago as a lifelong career educator. Spent sixteen years as a classroom teacher and involved in co-curriculars from student council to club advisor to head wrestling coach at one point in time. So it's what I do, it's who I am, being involved in schools. We moved, my wife and I both retired two years ago. We moved to Waterford. We have a son and wife and a granddaughter, a brand new one-year-old granddaughter who live in the area. And so as we had been traveling out to visit them, we just fell in love with the community of Waterford. And so as we were looking for somewhere to move to, I called Luke. Luke and I have a past. Told him, Luke, I think I'm moving to your town. And put me to work. And so he did. Asked me to help out with some things with the referendum over time. Qualifications, again, throughout my career, I've been fortunate enough to have been selected, elected to numerous boards. I've served as chairman and/or president of those boards. And then finally, I just want to say, one of the things I prided myself on over my career is the Stephen Covey principle of seek first to understand before you can be understood. And so I think that's a really important thing to bring to this position. It's something I brought to all positions I was involved in. And certainly if I'm fortunate enough to get elected to the board, I will live by that model.
Thank you. Next question in reverse order goes back to you, Mr. Sobrowski. What are our school district's most pressing issues? And how do you propose addressing them if elected?
I think without question, the most pressing issue the school board's facing at this point in time in our school system is building trust and support in our community. I heard loud and clear, working through this past referendum as part of the Community Action Committee that was put together, that we have some of the issues with trust in our community. For lots of reasons, as I've come to find out. How do you fix it? Well, I think it's important, absolutely imperatively important, that we're as transparent as we possibly can be legally. Some things we just can't share with the public, obviously. We've got to go out and we've got to engage the public. We have to get out where they are. We have to go out where the community is and talk to them, no matter what side of the issues they're on, and find out what they think. We've got to do that in a collaborative process because we have needs here. And we have to figure out how to address them. I'm interested in trying to find out what the community thinks our needs are. Because again, I think the referendum put our needs in front of them. And yet we've heard from them that some of them don't think those were needs. Well, I want to find out from them why. I think that's really important.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Patel?
Okay, I'm going to separate this question from question number eight, which has to do with the failed referendum. So what I see as a pressing issue in the next two, three, four years has to do with our operational budget. People are paying attention in any sense. You're seeing multiple operating referendums going to referendum all around the state, not just to mention southeast Wisconsin and our small area. But people, I think the public needs to get educated that our budget was froze starting in 1993 with revenue limits imposed by the legislature. And that wasn't so bad because the legislature had promised to fund two-thirds of operational costs. And the legislature had promised that we would get cost of living adjustments every year tied to the Consumer Price Index. However, they revoked and reneged on those promises in 2004 and 2009. Then in Governor Walker's first budget, the per pupil aid assessment to every school in the state of Wisconsin was cut by average of $554 per pupil in your building. So in 2012, we ate about a six, took a $600,000 operating loss because of that change. And that $554, it took eleven more years before that full amount was restored. So with inflation, those cuts reneged on promises for operating the school, when you factor in inflation, at $3 million less a year than had those promises not been reneged upon, had we been able to keep up with inflation. So what's the answer to that? Well, the state of Wisconsin has set up the funding system, not us. We have to live with the system. The legislature and the governor have agreed at this point about how much money should go to the schools. But the legislature wants to do it via property tax relief, where the governor wants it to come directly to schools. So they're going to have to come to grips with that. And our public here in the Waterford school area, they need to get a hold of Robin Voss, Chuck Wykers, the representatives, and say, we need to work this problem out. Because if we got to go to referendum every couple of years just to operate this building, then that's dire consequences. I think we learned yesterday or a couple of days ago, Burlington has decided to close the school and lay off forty people. So now you're going to be growing class sizes and we need to avoid that. The only other thing tied with budget is teacher shortages. And there's competition for teachers and that means wage growth and we need to be able to keep pace with that.
Thank you. Next question comes back to you, Mr. Patel. What strategies do you support for improving student achievement and closing the academic gaps within our district?
Okay. One of the things we did three years ago or four, there was a proposal to change our structural class schedule from the traditional eight-hour period, eight-hour periods to an eight-drop-two. Well, when I first heard eight-drop-two, I had no idea what that ever meant, never heard about it. So I did a lot of research, including academic papers, peer reviewed, to reading reviews of school districts that had gone to the eight-drop-two schedule. And there was no doubt that the major benefit was identifying and raising that bottom twenty percent of students academically. And that was the eight-drop-two would allow for identifying those students and having intervention time during the school day. So I spent hundreds of hours researching that and reading it. And I knew it'd be a controversial decision with parents, but I thought we needed to help that lower group. So I voted in favor of it. Another thing we're looking at is maybe changing our grading system, but that's still up in the area.
Thank you. Mr. Sobrowski?
Well, I want to start off answering this question with talking a little bit about teaching and education itself in general. I have a firm belief that being a teacher and an educator is a science and an art. I think there's a science to teaching and that's where our data comes from. That's where we do all the testing for it. And so because of that part of the science and the testing we do, the state mandated test, the ACT, the PSAT, all those kinds of things, that gives us a data point to start to compare ourselves to others. And to find out what our gaps might be compared to what they say the standard is. So that's, I think, you know, we spend money and do all those kind of prep courses for that. It's the art piece though, that I think gets a little bit tougher to help with and support. Because it involves supporting things where you can't test for it. And I'll give you an example. There in the school right now, there's an ongoing teacher support group that's charged with trying to come up with ways to get kids more fired up about taking the ACT and the state mandated tests. Because that test on that given day is high stakes. But what if the kid had a fight with his girlfriend that morning? What if the kid's sick? What if the kid's got a big game that night and is all nervous and so they blow the test? Now you're in trouble. So the motivation becomes a factor. And I think supporting that part of that art, like the team that's here in the high school already working on that, to come up with ways to motivate kids to take the test serious, to understand their importance, is critical. So I'll be supportive of all those, both the science piece and those things that address the art of teaching.
Thank you. Thank you. As we move into our next question, we start again with you, Mr. Sobrowski. How do you envision fostering a positive and supportive school climate that prioritizes students and staff's safety and well-being?
A hundred percent supportive, safety and well-being of our students and staff is our number one thing. Absolutely has to be our number one thing as a school board. It's what we're here for. Because it's proven that if people don't feel safe and they don't feel secure, they're not going to perform at the optimum levels. So we've got to invest in that. It should be our number one priority. Every time we talk about priorities and where we're going to spend money, because you spend money based on where your priorities are. That's got to be number one. How do you do that? Well, it comes from developing, A, a mindset about that. But B, the people in the system have to be willing to positively role model it and support that environment. And when they see that it's not occurring, things that happen in schools, bullying, those kinds of issues, we need to call them out. We need to address them now. Again, I've been an educator for thirty-eight years. I've seen way too many people who do this to it, ignore it. It's not my problem. That, from what I understand, I haven't talked to Dan and some others here in the school, we don't have that as a big issue because they do do that. So again, I think it just needs to be an investment of the resources we have, time, personnel, money, in what we deem important.
Thank you. Mr. Patel?
Okay, I think in terms of safety, well-being, I think it's important to note that over the last two to three years, we've done a fairly extensive job securing the perimeter of this building with new doors, locks, windows, cameras. And that's great. However, we still have one identified security issue and that has to do with delivery services. And we've taken steps to remedy that problem so that we don't have open doors, easy access to the building during those times. Unfortunately, that may require either some grant money or some referendum money to fulfill that. Next, I think it's important the public realize that the school board, along with our new superintendent, found a way to fund a school resource officer 24/7. I think he's been just an exemplary outstanding member of our staff. So that's important. Number two, three, four, I'm sorry. We, as a board, attempt to communicate to our teachers, teaching assistants, that we know they're the heart and soul of what goes on here. It's not the board, it's not admin, it is the teaching staff. And that means also when you're going to recognize them, trying to compensate them appropriately. And we have attempted to do that. Last one. The school has a code of conduct, which will maybe be voted on or reviewed later tonight. And it's a code of conduct normally for co-curricular activities. But I know we have staff striving to have every school, every student in the school sign that code, talking about respectful behavior and respecting differences and the diversity. And I think it's fantastic. I don't remember the last count, it was eight hundred students had signed it, eight hundred and fourteen. So we're well on our way to almost one hundred percent students appreciating the code of conduct.
Thank you. We are halfway through our question set that was given in advance. And we'll take this time to pause and take a question at large. Does anybody in the room have a question that they'd like to ask the candidates? Not just yet, okay? I will take one that was sent to us prior to the meeting today. The question is, and this goes to Mr. Patel first. Share with us what you see as the pros and cons of social, emotional learning, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and critical race theory.
All in a minute and a half, Dennis. Good luck.
Okay. My first observation would be in 1982 and 1983, I learned about critical race theory. That despite most popular people believing this was developed by a law professor named Beverly Crenshaw at UW-Madison, it was actually invented by a gentleman named Derek Bell at Harvard. And what was particularly interesting is when Mr. Bell came out with critical race theory was how many of his colleagues, and when I mean colleagues, at that point, he's a staff lawyer at the NAACP filing lawsuits all throughout the South, fighting Jim Crow. They were not pleased with his principles of critical race theory. I think critical race theory has gotten some harsh reviews and it's simply been replaced by social, emotional learning. My experience in reading about CRT, social, emotional learning, and DEI is it is too often resulting in a lowering of standards in a school in the interest of equity. And I think doing that in lieu of having a meritocracy system is the wrong direction to go. And I'd like to point out the following. Like standardized testing went away, universities, colleges were no longer relying on ACT, SAT scores to admit you. And that was about the same time you had the growth of CRT, DEI, et cetera. And now here we are a few years later and we flip-flopped. Because we have standardized testing returning to the universities because they've determined that they are a predictor of success at a university. And now we have company after company, entity after entity, doing away with their DEI programs. So it's an interesting dichotomy there.
Thank you. Mr. Sobrowski?
Dennis did a great job answering that question in a minute and thirty. Because each one should and probably is a question in and of itself. Again, having been in education a long time, I've lived these acronyms. And as we were commenting before this meeting today, there's more and more of these acronyms out there. In terms of critical race theory, Dennis nailed it. I mean, it's perfect. The flip-flop of it is just something that's mind-boggling to me and where it's at. It's become a political issue in today's world. Either you are or you aren't for it. And Dennis's leap to that, he thinks it's more social, emotional learning nowadays today. I think those are two separate things, they really do. So the social, emotional learning that's going on, I think people are just kind of figuring out that that's a component of education that we need to somehow figure out to help kids. I think the pandemic brought that out completely. That the kids' social, emotional needs need to be taken care of. It's a growing field. It's one that I, as I was finishing my career out, we were just kind of looking at what are the best ways to do it. And the school resource people are, should be the leaders in that. Your guidance counselors, your social workers, your school psych, they're the experts there. And we need to rely on them some more in order to get through that. The other piece, I heard the bell, but I got to say something about DEI. Diversity, equity, and inclusion. Again, another issue that's become very political around the United States. Should we or shouldn't we teach it and have it in our schools? I think it's one that we have to carefully address, but it's something that we need to be very, very mindful of. Because diversity today is, the world has changed. It has. You know, again, I'm sixty-one years old, so I consider myself an old-timer. But believe me, if we're going to be successful with our kids in school, we've got to teach them how to deal with diversity in the world. We've got to teach them how to be equitable with all. And I'll just, I'll use the LGBTQ community. I have no idea, I'll be completely honest, I have no idea what that community looks like here at Waterford High School. I will certainly find out very quickly if I become a board member. But that's a community as an example whose needs have to be met. We have to recognize they're here, they're people, and they deserve our attention. And they deserve everything that all members of the school get. And so again, in my two years in Waterford, I've taken great notice that this board, to their credit, and this community, to their credit even more, haven't made the board a political thing. Unlike some other boards in our local areas, that politics has entered their world. And again, it can destroy the great things that are going on in the school district. I worked in one, it's where I retired from. And it's one of the reasons I decided to retire. I still love my job, but I just, it's just not what it was supposed to be.
I'm going to re-reduce our question on standardized testing, as Mr. Patel alluded to, a little bit of standardized testing. What is your stance on standardized testing? And how should it be used to evaluate student progress and student, or school performance? Yep, starting with you.
Oh, it's me, okay. Again, I'll just take it back to my science versus art comment from before. The standardized testing provides a data point. Again, whatever, when it's scheduled and when it's done, very dependent on how the kids have been prepped for it. And again, it's a data point on that day and time. Now, it's high-stake stuff because the state report card comes out and it's, on that day, that test score is what they're using to give us a score and compare it to others. ACT and PSAT and those things for kids that are going to college. It's a big time, how well they score determines what schools they get to go to. So I think it's important. I would not ever ignore it. But I think we also need to figure out a way, that art piece, and I'll take it back to motivation. I think you have to invest in your school, spending time talking to the kids about how important that test is, without putting undue stress on them about it. They're going to be stressed out enough. But how can we motivate them to know that it is an important thing for us?
Thank you. Mr. Patel?
Okay, I think we have to recognize that, like it or not, standardized testing is mandated still. And we're going to have to deal with it. I mean, it started years ago, but I mean, from No Child Left Behind to the more recent 2015 Act of Every Student Succeeds, through third grade through twelfth grade, there's going to be English Language Arts, Reading Mass, Science, Social Study, standardized testing. I already mentioned that a lot of universities, six, eight years ago, went away from SAT scores. What they discovered is they started admitting a lot of students who could not be successful in their environment. And so they've decided they had to revert back to the SAT or ACT scores because they do measure success. In terms of a high school setting, standardized tests are meant to give educators the opportunity to measure their own educational strategies. How are we doing? Standardized tests can measure the strengths and weaknesses of individual students and identify the learning gap. The other thing standardized testing is important for number levels, but it tells us where we're at in terms of our local competition, schools across the state, schools nationwide. So there is a place for it. We're going to be dealing with it. And I don't consider it a dirty word, standardized, dirty phrase, standardized testing. I think it's necessary and has its appropriate place.
Thank you. Next question comes back to you, Mr. Patel. As a board member, how would you collaborate with teachers, administrators, parents, and community members to make informed decisions that benefit the district's stakeholders?
Okay, I admittedly tried to break this down. Since I've been on the school board, if I have a question of the administration, I normally pick up the phone and call. Or I send a text and say, call me when you get a chance, I have these questions. And we have a very open dialogue. There is nothing I would say in private that I wouldn't say to any admin person here. And that's the way it should be. With teachers, I have tried to involve myself, well, I have three kids that went through school here. They graduated in 2004, 2006, and 2019. There's still a remnant of 2006, I think, still here, the teachers that I've known since then. And then obviously, a lot of teachers from my youngest child when he graduated. So I've had teachers call me, email me, and have questions. But there is a chain of command that you've got to be careful to follow, depending on what the issue is. Parents. I've tried to involve myself with committees like the Human Growth and Development Committee, which has teachers, parents, and students. So if I'm on that committee, I can be in the room, listening to what they're saying and doing. I can be on the Code of Conduct Committee where, again, there's parents, there are children, and teachers. And I'm able to participate and talk with that group. And more recently, I've been somewhat intimately involved with discussion about our grading system and should it change or not change. So I've had four or five meetings with the teaching staff. And they've allowed me in to participate as though I was a member of the staff in discussing these issues. So, you know, I guess the last thing I would say, I wish more parents would come and talk at public comment time during school board meetings so we can identify issues that we may not be aware of.
Thank you. Same question to you, Mr. Sobrowski.
Well, I want to start off putting out there that school boards exist to be policymakers for a school district. The staff, the administration are the experts, if you will, in the profession. And we as school board members should treat them as that way. The public, hmm, they kind of can be one side or the other. Sometimes they're policymakers, they believe. Sometimes they want to think... to think they're the experts because they went to school. I think back to my days as that school administrator or that teacher, where I'm in a debate with a parent about what's the best way to do something, and I'm offering it up, is my professional opinion, and I get told no. And so, as a school board member, right, if those kinds of conversations rise to our level, if somebody's not happy, Dennis just invited them to call, so would I. But what I'd want to try to get them to understand is, we trust our teachers and men until we don't. And when we don't, it's a whole other issue. And they'll know it way before the public, well, that we're having some issues with that. I, you know, in terms of the stakeholders and making decisions, I think we got to include all of them when we have decisions that we're going to make about how we're going to change things, or things that are going to be added. I like that I heard from Dennis, he's been sitting on some committees, been invited in. I think that is awesome. I would love to be invited into some teacher groups that are looking at how do we change some things in high school. But again, as Dennis alluded to, there is a kind of chain of command. I would never just go there without being invited there as a board member. Again, the board is a policymaking board, and we should be dealing with policies.
Thank you. Just checking with our audience to see if there's any questions that have come up since we last spoke. Hearing none, we'll keep moving forward. We've got a few more questions. If you do have a question online, or if you think of one from the audience, we will be taking those questions for our candidates. So again, Todd Sabrowski, Dennis Bertel, here with us today as members for school board. Not with us this evening is Gary Beck, senior. Next question is, what measures do you propose to ensure fiscal responsibility and transparency in allocating school funds while maintaining a high-quality education? Starts with you, Mr. Sabrowski.
Fiscal responsibility is about coming up and deciding what your priorities are. So whatever process is presently being used by the board to set their priorities, one, two, three, four, five, whatever it is, five-year plan, those priorities need to be addressed in the order that you set them. Hopefully, that involves multiple stakeholders, the community, parents, students, and staff. Should all be a part of what those priorities are. And somewhere along the way, you're going to have to have a bunch of meetings where you reach a consensus, where everybody can agree that this is the order, we're going to attack those things and make decisions for it. So we can spend our money in an appropriate fashion. Again, I think that the priorities that are set will happen only through open and honest communication. They've got to occur between all stakeholders. And so, without that, then it's just a top-down driven model. And again, I don't think that works if your community and schools are going to be going from good to great.
Thank you. Mr. Bertel?
Okay, one of the things I think the public doesn't realize on occasion is, our books are audited every year by a major accounting firm, whose job it is, is to look for problems. Inappropriate spending, excess spending, not enough checks and balances. And we've come through those audits my six years on the board very cleanly. That audit is also used to set our bond rating, which is important when it comes to borrowing money. We do have a AA bond rating, which is the highest that it can be. The other thing I, when I make this assessment, is I break down the budget. The majority of our budget is salaries, benefits, retirement, health insurance, transportation, food service. I just saw a six-figure number to Gateway Technical College for paying for college credits for kids who are still students here. So when you eliminate from the budget all of our fixed expenses, discretionary spending becomes quite small. And so, and that's then goes down to department heads making spending requests to the administration, and bringing them to the board. They may need curriculum materials, new software, software licensing, hardware. So when you start ensuring transparency in funds, you know, when you get it down there, it's very few dollars in reality. I'd also assure everybody listening to this, every month, every school board member goes through our check register, and yes, we do have questions at times, and we get answers to all those questions. It's very transparent in that respect when we're asking questions. Last thing I would say is, we're obligated to have an annual meeting every August to approve our budget. It is hard to get any member of the public to come to that, who could raise their hand, "Can you tell us total teacher salaries for this year? What's your median teacher salary?" Nobody ever comes and asks that. I don't even get anybody asking me for that information. So I just wish that we'd have more involvement, parents, grandparents would come and step up and interact with us more.
Thank you. Next question comes back to you, Mr. Bertel. How do you plan to address challenges related to our school's facilities and grounds, particularly in light of the recent failed referendums?
Okay, this is the one question I have not written any notes on. I believe the people in Waterford are tremendous people, they care about their community, they care about their school, they're patriotic people. So they need to be sold as to the importance of monies for the school. Now, Todd earlier mentioned trust issues, as on the Waterford Education Alliance, I heard trust issues. I made the effort at times to get people to explain to me, "How did we violate your trust?" And it's because the last referendum, we had two projects that we didn't have the money to complete. And that is true. There were some cost overruns on other projects. And the other thing I heard was, 24 years ago, we were promised that we were going to build a swimming pool for the community. I lived here then. I have no memory of that, but I'm like, a swimming pool? I mean, 24 years later, you're holding the swimming pool as a violation of trust? And apparently, that was true. Long story short, the school board's got to get together soon and talk with our architects, other experts, people who know this building, building and grounds people. And we have to develop a plan going forward that is going to be complicated. Do we, are we bare bones, or does the public want us to add on to Career Tech, at the cost of several million dollars to add on to this? If we're going to open the ceilings for galvanized piping, are we going to install fire suppression? And once those are open and the walls are open, are we going to do all of our electrical upgrades? Okay, well, now we're getting up to 25, 35 million just to get that stuff done. So there's a lot to be hashed out. All we can do is be as transparent as we can with the public and do what we say we're going to do.
Thank you, Mr. Sabrowski.
I agree with everything Dennis just said, absolutely. And I'll add this. I'm new to the community, two-plus years here. It's a community that's proud of its history. It's a community that takes great pride in still being, having that small-town feel to it. And yet, the school is not a small-town school anymore. It is not. And it's, being new, I look at it and go, holy, we're a modern high school. We're a 21st century high school that is operating with outdated stuff, infrastructure in particular. And so, I think the community needs to decide. We need to go listen to them and ask this question, what do you want your high school to be? It was good enough for you in the past, so we're going to stay there and we're just going to live with it? I'd ask you this, what kind of car did you drive 40 years ago? Did it have power steering? Did it have power windows? Did it have something that cleaned off your windshield and you turn your wipers on? I don't think so. Everybody drives a modern car today, why can't we have a modern school? Okay, I'd ask you, is the school we have right now just okay, present? All right, then we'll have to figure it out from there. Or do we want to move into the future? And the future is about deciding what are our needs. See, that's the other piece here. We've got to, we've got to come to a consensus and define wants versus needs. My definition's way different. I was in support of the last referendum, because I saw almost everything in that referendum as a need. And yet, as I talked to the community after it failed, and people have been out and about now campaigning a little bit, trying to find out what's going on, they defined well over half of what was in the referendum as a want. And so, I think we've got to have a major discussion about that and come to a consensus on wants versus needs. Once we can come to a consensus on, these things are needed, then we can set, I'll go back to an earlier answer, then we can set up some priorities about how we're going to get after those and knock them off based on funding, based on cost. But until we do that, we're just, we're guessing. We are.
Thank you. One last opportunity. Does anybody have a question from the floor? Please.
I guess, backing up, maybe some of this was answered earlier, I apologize, I walked in a little late. I'm very curious, what's motivating you gentlemen to run, either for the first time or to seek reelection? And I wish our third candidate was here, so I could hear from him as well.
I'll go first.
Please.
I answered something similar before, Mike. I see myself as a servant leader. Every community I've ever lived in, I've tried to become involved in, joining various service organizations, obviously being in education, doing things there. And so moving to Waterford, it's more the same for me. And in this case, I'm going to choose to hopefully get elected, to my time and my talents, my leadership experiences, to the school board in that role of serving the community. That's, I mean, that's really how I view it. I'm going to serve the community as best I can around the things they can determine we need.
And I'll probably be repeating my answer, Mike, but I'm not even sure you know this. But my motivation to run for school board originally came Keith Branstadter showing up at my house in September, October of 2017, explained to me that this was my civic responsibility. And I guess I still view it that way. I love the Waterford community. I think the school is an important centerpiece of this community. And whatever it takes to try and bring that about for the continued growth and success of Waterford and the Village of Waterford, the Town of Waterford, the whole area of Tischigan, I want to see that through.
Mr. Bertel, you get the final question this evening. What is one thing people should know about you before casting their ballot?
Who came up with this question? You can see I didn't write down an answer to that one either. Driving here, I came up with an answer. And I may not be the only one who's experienced this. But I had a tremendous blessing seven, eight years ago, where a doctor said to me, "If the treatment don't, treatments do not work if less than two years to live." And that caused you to reprioritize your life. I would have been one of those that was considered a workaholic, working 60 to 80 hours a week, sleeping very little, not eating healthy. And after that event, and I remember, it was on June 5th, with my oncologist, and I just said, "You've got to be kidding me." I couldn't. It takes you a week or so to fathom that. And then after that, you realize that family, relationships, your community, your Lord are the most important things. So it was having that blessing to reorganize my life was a rather significant event.
Thank you. Mr. Sabrowski?
Again, I'm a retired educator. 38 years officially getting paid for a job I never, ever considered to be work, ever. I loved what I did and do in terms of education. It was a vocation, not a job. It was something, who I became. As a result of that, to motivate others about that, a long, long time ago, I developed a little saying called Goya, G-O-Y-A. It stands for give only or all. And if you're going to do something, it was a team I coached way back when, I said, "If we're going to do something, we're going to do it to the best of our ability." And so, Goya was born. I have lived by that motto for the last 30 years in my career and in my life. And so, again, as I mentioned before, coming to Waterford, very service-oriented person, I'll give my Goya efforts to make sure we're the best school district in the area.
Thank you very much. This starts to conclude our opportunity to meet our candidates this evening. The election date is Tuesday, November 5th.
April.
April 5th, I'm sorry.
April 5th.
Second.
Way off there.
Something's on November 5th.
Yes, Tuesday, April 2nd, apologize for that. Yes, Tuesday, April 2nd is our date. We have three candidates for two positions. Thank you, Dennis Bertel. Thank you, Todd Sabrowski, for your time this evening, for answering the questions. We appreciate your opportunity to get out, cast your ballot, and we look forward to having our next candidates of our school board named shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you.